Somebody asked if they're supposed to be hearing this.
I don't know, can't hear.
Yeah.
Oh.
On now.
Good now? Okay. All right, so then 5.2 is St. Helens School District 502 Business Report. Jessica, you first.
Sure. I think I'm just going to hand it over to Tiffany Elbrun. She is the Audit Manager who has supervised our audit and management over the last four years. Tiffany, thanks for joining us.
Yes, thank you for having me. So first, I'd like to thank the Board members for having me here tonight. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, perfect. So I'm here to present the 2122 Audit Report for St. Helens School District. I'll be going over the governing body letter, which summarizes the audit report as a whole. So on page one of the board letter, we discuss the purpose of the audit. For the school district, we focused on performing a financial statement audit, a compliance audit required by Oregon minimum standards, and a compliance audit for federal awards. On page two of the board letter, we discuss the results of the audit. The district had an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, meaning we gave a clean opinion. For statement on standards, we found no exceptions or issues requiring comment, except noted on page 72 of the report. For federal awards, we found no issues or non-compliance and no question costs. And then also, no separate management letter was issued, meaning we had no complications with management in order to perform a successful audit. And then in the significant audit matter section for corrected and uncorrected misstatements, we found none that were beyond trivial, meaning we were able to trace all financial numbers back to the original sources. Overall, the audit went very well, and that's due to all the hard work from Jessica and the rest of the staff in the business office. And we really appreciate being able to work with them each year. And that concludes my comments in regards to the audit. Did anyone have any questions?
Just want to say very grateful for Jessica's diligence and work. I mean, she's been here.
Yes.
That's the noise that everyone's listening to. Thank you for helping us out on that.
Yes, of course.
Please, Tiffany.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Need to say, well, note that last year, the board approved a one-year exception for our audit, our key policy that covered the audit that was recently completed and we're working on an updated draft. And we'll post our proposal at the end of the month. We'll go through evaluation talks, and I believe historically, we've had two board members volunteer to review the proposal. So if there's anyone who'd like to volunteer, I'll bring it up again as we get closer. But I'm prepared those would be when we're interested, we would look at you.
Well, then I guess it's time to turn to 5.3, our Superintendent with work, Mr. Scott.
Yeah, I was wondering if I can use the clicker from my seat before. Let's move forward. I've got three items that I wanted to talk to you about. The first one is the annual English learners' report from the state. And then I wanted to talk to you about the status of the high school construction project, budget, next steps, that sort of thing. And then I wanted to share with you some ideas that we have supporting our elementary schools. So let's start out here, here on the board. You have this in the packet, the first page, but it was all emailed to you. And this is an annual report, it's a little confusing, it says 2018-19. That's because it's a report that they do not annually, but I think it's every three years. And so it's kind of spanned over the COVID years, which in my mind doesn't make it necessarily the most comprehensive or valid or accurate. But it does give a snapshot, because everyone was in that situation, right? Fair enough. So I've put a little arrow there. If you click on, so you see St. Helens School District, if you click on, like, Salem Kaiser, then it'll give you that drop down, and you then click on that little arrow, and it will scroll through every single school district in the state. So you've got the three that you could compare. And so the purpose of this document is to take a look and see what St. Helens is doing, the demographics, the results that our kiddos are getting, and how that along with the other districts happen. I think for us, it's really beneficial to have our DLL teachers come and present and share some of the work that they're doing and how they support our English language learners. And we have a growing number, and it spans, you know, the scope of abilities. We have some kiddos that are referred to as newcomers. Those are kiddos who are, as it sounds, new to the country or the state. And English is a second language that they really haven't had much experience at all speaking. And then we have kiddos who, English is their first language, but because there's a second language spoken at home, that it creates some struggles academically for them, so they're also in that. So it's a big span. We've got some great teachers, and I think it'd be real good for them to share their sort of work. So that's the English language learner comparison. Questions on that?
Doctor?
All right. So it's got something off of it.
Okay, I'm going on to the high school one?
Yeah, yeah.
5.3.2 High School Construction Budget Act.
Yeah, there we go. So as I think everyone knows, supply chain issues as well as inflation have impacted all of us. And in particular, it's impacted our high school project. We're on budget as far as being able to complete the project, but there's been some significant reductions. We refrained some significant heartaches on the decisions that we had to make as far as what to include and what not to include. That's the reality that I think anybody right now is going through. That's how a construction, that's such a reality that many of our community members are having this with their family decisions. So I pulled this off of Liberty Mutual Insurance website. And just to give a snapshot, and I think it's no surprise, 95% of Fortune 1,000 companies are seeing disruption in supply chain. 75% are seeing negative impact, and 55% are downgrade their growth projection. So that's just kind of a little bit of a refresher, a reminder that maybe we don't need, but I thought it was important that we included. The next piece up there is inflation. And I got this off of a housekeeping and parking site, interestingly enough, but it really points out clearly what's been happening to our own home budgets. And you can see how inflation is really wreaking havoc on everything. So how, the question is, and how do we manage this as we're building and remodeling the entire high school? So we start out, as you recall, with a dream, right? We talk with people, what is it that you want that high school? And reach out to the community, staff, and we pack everything we can in there. That's the process that every architect goes through. It's kind of a painful process, because they get what you dream about, and they get people all excited about their dreams, knowing that, well, we're never going to get to our dreams, but we're going to see how close we can get. The reason why they do that? If you don't ask people to dream, then quite often you leave things out and think, well, we can't have that, so I'm not even going to suggest it. And good architects, like we have, will hear a dream and then say, okay, here's what the dream looks like. You can't afford it, but here's our answer to your dream, and you can afford this, right? So that's why there's a process, it just never feels good. Interestingly enough, we hit kind of a sweet spot when we went out for the middle school bond and the new plan. Inflation had skyrocketed, as I've shown, in particular in the construction area. So for an elementary school, an average elementary school, the price to build is now about $60 million. The bill of what we have now out here to new middle school, upwards of $80 to $100 million, and we go far as for 40. So we did things that got it at the right time, and it's that timing that's important, right? And then a new high school, anywhere from $150 to $200 million, yeah. So this is the dream, the dream big. And this is the more detailed drawing off of the dream big. And it was over budget. And I think there's a number you can see down there, 68. That's minus the soft costs, minus the equipment, minus the fees that, you know, that are included, that we need for permitting and that type of thing. So we got our first estimates in there and realized, no, we can't really afford this. So we asked our architects and our engineers, start looking at scope. And so we started working our way down with scope, taking things out, but still keeping to what our community had asked us for. And then we get to this point here. And I think it's important to see the difference between this. And as we moved from this drawing, you can kind of see here, this is where we had the offices in the middle, remember, with that nice hallway and lots of classes? And the realization that we're going to have to do some more editing and keep not reconfigure all of these classrooms. So that would mean that our teachers and students would not have anything new, and we'd have our administrators and council with a new office. That is not a good plan that anybody's wanted. So we moved on to this, where we do have some upgrades in building B. And the connection is the science. So these are all new upgraded, state-of-the-art science classrooms. And we took the old cafeteria here and turned that into offices. And then the old library with some classes on the side is the new counseling center, which is nice, because it's out in with the students, they don't have to go to the office. And also, the hub of a good educational institution is the media center, and that's what we've got there, the old commons. The band room and the choir room are in the same spots, but I think most of you have been and did a tour. They're significantly larger, just because we've removed the storage areas and shifted back to the other areas. So that finally got us down to this, and what we can afford. And this is where we're at today. We're going to have a nice school. You guys have seen the flyers, but it's missing some key things that I think we feel are needed to do the project right. I think our community feels the same way. So this is our current budget to build the high school. And up top, we have architecture, engineers, professional services. Those are, you know, soft costs. The additional, then we also have the abatement. We have the furnitures and fixtures, that's the equipment, and the permitting. And then you can see, we also have a good contingency, owner contingency of about $3 million. On the contractor side, the construction company also has roughly a $2 million every contingency. And those are used, they have things that they need to take care of, and we use that if we have scope or if something comes up that was unforeseen and not the plans, then me as the owner takes care of. But that gives us our total of $69 million. So this is balanced for us. We can move forward with it, but like I said, it's missing some pretty significant items, in our opinion. So to get to this budget here, we went through and did value engineering. Sorry it's cut off, but you can see most of it there.
Okay, can you go for bigger than that? I told him the number, so where is?
It's good online, it's just the projector.
You want to call it after he's done? Am I looking at the touch there?
Fair point, actually. Staple.
I don't have a coin like that. I like conversation.
Okay. So you can see the different items in here. We have a lot of HVAC units at this high school that are held together by baling wire and duct tape. Jared Kwan and his team have done a remarkable job keeping them limping along. They'll continue to limp along unless we do something about it. And so we've made those types of painful cuts. Getting down here to get to our balanced budget, we had to take out $7,461,553. But it's not all like scope-type stuff. It's items that we save money. So value engineering isn't always a worth cutting thing, it's looking for more value. And so the very last one, I think, is an excellent example. And we continue to look for areas to save money and, you know, have some cost cutting. So the tile mortar, we found out that there's another product that specs out and is just as good as what was in the bid. And by shifting that other project, saved us $87,000. So even things like that, we're looking and drilling down to try to make sure we're getting the most for our taxpayers' dollars. So then pregnant? Was that on the? I don't know what I did with that one class. You got some?
That's what we got for.
There you go. This was a
AI doctor just sent me my message last week. I was worried.
So this is the total ad alternate futures list. Ad alternates are those items that we have the contractors, subcontractors bid on and give us a price. And when we do that, then they aren't pain orders for us. And so we have a number of those items on here. And then we have also something that's called a futures list. That's in the future, as it sounds. If we sell property, or if we go out for a loan, or something else, we would consider purchasing those. So if you look at, this is everything essentially that was yanked out of, then some out of the dream big project, okay? Not everything, but a good portion of it can be found here. And if you look at the bottom, the total is $19 million, if you want to put it all back. It's a pretty big number. So some of our options. We could go out, we could take a loan, give it to our general fund, sell property, or we could go out for another bond. Now, I swore that I had never suggested going out for another bond. One was our superintendent. But we have an opportunity here. So there's a grant called the Awesome Grant, you can see it right up here. Because not a lot of school districts have gone out for bonds in the last couple of years, the last biennium, there's some additional money in this grant pool, which has allowed us to get in the first come, first served. Let's see, you see right there, our grant amount would be $4 million. So whatever we go out for in bond, we would get $4 million in addition. And so if we would wait, then you're looking at the next biennium, and there's no chance that we'll get this grant, because there may be other people, and the money may be taken. I know a lot of folks think that, well, you know, our free reduced rate is pretty high. We should fall into this list, which is a priority list, and they prioritize it based on community free reduced and demographics. As a district, we're right at about 100. So out of about 50%, out of 200 school districts, we're right about over, pretty close to the very middle. So there's no guarantee that we would get this grant again. So this is, we've already been awarded the grant if we pass a bond.
That's different from our 2016 measure, where we were, we had to have, unfortunately, other schools to be able to have the measure. This was kind of serendipitous in a way. We applied for the funds, they pulled out things in order. St. Helens, about this isn't in order by priority ranking or institutional ID. St. Helens was the first name, pulled out the first of time. So like, yeah, we were guaranteed first line should our stakeholders have.
So I wanted to take us back in time a little bit. This was our 2021. And what I want to point out is, right here, the maturity or the extent of the bond ends in 2015. And the combined rate of the bond, of our old bond and for the high school, our estimate was $2.32. And that's what we published out to our community. That's what I believe was in the bond language, that if you support this bond, we estimate that your taxes would go up by 94 cents for a total of $2.32 for a majority of the life of the bond, okay? So it looked like this. Now, we've done some work. And this is an estimate for a bond if and when we go out in May. And that would be my recommendation, that we support a bond from May. So it would be for $4 million. And so it'd be for $4 million. And if you look, it ends in 2015. And the total is $2.28, which is actually lower than the original bond to build the high school. When we push these out, we're conservative. So $2.30 is more than what the estimates came out to. This is suggesting $2.28 with the $4 million, the $4 million bond added to it. And so what we have is, you see this little sliver is where we can slide in that $4 million, and it ends the same time as the other bonds are projected to end. How does this happen? Well, because there's more properties being built in our district, then that's increased the amount of people who pay the taxes. There's been a slight increase in property values. And there's been some maturity of the bond as far as aging out. And it's allowed us to have this small sliver where we can slide in without changing essentially anything and getting $4 million. Now, the great thing about that is, it's a rare opportunity. We can, if we can pass a bond for $4 million, we double our money or match it and make $8 million. And we can do that without increasing, changing, increasing the taxes or extending the maturity of the current bond. So it doesn't happen very often, might not happen again, but hide is everything. And we really have ourselves in a pretty good position.
Very good, it's everything on the $18 million list.
It does not. And here's my draft recommendation of what I would recommend adding. And what you'll see in there is, the first one is, we've got that that area courtyard out behind the cafeteria. Right now, it doesn't have a covered area. And I believe if we added a covered area to that, it would extend. Kids could have lunch up there, when it's a little wet, not like it's freezing, but it would really extend the size of that cafeteria and the usability. So I would recommend adding the covered area. The next group is HVAC. The HVAC that Ian held together with baling wire and duct tape. We would upgrade and replace the units that are keeping our classrooms cool. Interesting thing, and it's shocking as we've done these types of construction projects, about a third of the cost is mechanical on any project. So that means about a third of the cost of this project, the middle school unit, has been essentially your HVAC, which to me seems like a large number, but that's pretty standard. But that's one of the reasons why it was removed, and another reason why we want to get it back in there. Next item on the list is the auditorium. There's some significant upgrades that I think need to happen in the auditorium. You see the painting cards, that type of thing. Get it, get a fresh draft in there. Locker room upgrades, the next item on there. Going down the list, CTE improvements, storage area for our, really not even a wood shop anymore. It's definitely a construction shop. We've got lots of big equipment now that needs to be stored. They're doing great work out there, so we need to support them. Auto shop is in there as well. We're working on a plan for turf fields. This would allow us to get turf fields without looking for funds in other areas. So that's in there. And then maybe one of the most asked pieces that I get when I'm in the community, are you going to pay the parking lot? This can get us to the point where we pay the parking lot. If you look at the total, it's less than 8 million, but based off of the experience, I don't recommend not putting more on there than 8 million. And
Daniel for 350 in my 2016?
Yeah.
We passed on it.
So those are my recommendations. I have on here the timetable, so it's coming up quick. We need to, as a board, you need to decide on 25th, whether it's a ye or a nay for sure. And then, you know, we've got the ballot measure dates that come into play there where we put a language, file with the county, and then the election would be the basis. So with all that, do you have any questions?
If we could go over this list, because we don't affect on this board right now. Do you picture a little more work being done on what we're adding and taking out?
Everything that's taken out, it's out, right? So this isn't really a time where we can do a lot of adding back unless it's on this list, because it's already been planned in the drawing at some point. So yeah, there could definitely be some more time for us to reflect.
What time can you come, I have number 22. They thought I was the connector.
They thought I was the connector.
There, there are not classrooms though.
So that, that, there was five classrooms there, I think? Two on one side and three on the other?
Yeah.
So if it was, and then it went to three classrooms. It's the classrooms, the connector will be there, but not the classrooms.
Oh, I got you.
That's, that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not, I got you.
Yeah, we can, you know, definitely make sure you have that and look at it. And we've got time to.
Do you really expect like population, we're seeing like that we have enough classrooms that everything's going well that way right now? Cause I know, like originally we were pulling up the same amount of furniture that we were putting back essentially. So making sure that we have all the classrooms that we actually need.
And our future considerations with the, we talked about today and all of the properties potentially there. Frankly, I'm kind of curious to see what the last ten years look like. It's a way to kind of make some semblance of a guess about what there's twenty.
Part of our awesome, like we just revealed that the facility is that in the plan which involved a whole package of construction, the student and sort of demographic. They'll put that on. Some of those, I don't know how they number, but things like windows and such like that. I always just wonder.
Yeah.
If it's necessary now.
Those are, they're not necessary, they're items that staff would like. If you go back to this list, it has, I believe, most of the prices. So you can see what it's going to cost. And I wanted to get, you know, a total for my list here, so I took zero of them all out.
Is there not picking on, I think, sure we can go throw out a wood shop and field, areas that are just serving the limited number of students?
You mean?
Very soon.
The turf fields. Right, things that, well, there's a population. It's not the entire school population, or at least utilize any larger section of the population. And we're looking at cost to value and we look at some of those. And I don't know necessarily if it's nice when we can have that conversation. I think that's a longer conversation. Cause currently, we can spend a lot of time dealing about this and then just fall flat on our faces. So this is getting a little carted for the horsey here, but I give some thoughts.
Personally, I would put more money towards the CTE programs, specifically engineering and adults, because not only is CTE a huge demographic at our high school, but we are starting to see a shift now where our elementary schools and middle schools are becoming more engineering and CTE focused. New, following what's just passed with the state of Oregon, a hundred million dollars towards engineer programs in elementary schools. So we're going to see here in five, six years, a huge uprising of students who want more of those programs. And if we're not able to offer those programs, well, then we'll disappoint them. Then we conquer them, they're, they're challenged.
I, I do think we could really get lost in this. You know, the primary conversation for us tonight, we would consider is, since I've been here, we have had two different bonds that we've gone through and somehow passed, which is somewhat a war. What we have in front of us is another question. A lot of hard work from everybody sitting at this table and some graciousness from the community and our stakeholders that believe that we did, we put together two schools, did a great job there. We reopened Columbia City, been a lot of significant work. Go back out and say, okay, we did our best, but unfortunately, circumstances that's out of our control and we do this, I think it's going to be a heavy lift. The important part, as you pointed out, is the serendipity of the timing. Given the fact that we wouldn't necessarily change anything that we've already promised, it is a significant lift in this conversation. I think we're going to have to really look at, you know, pandemic messed a lot of things though. And we have to move forward, we have to think not just about kind of pre-pandemic pandemic, but what does the future of our school look like? Yes, we will have a great looking school as much as we can. But I do fear we're going to fall a little bit short if we don't do something. And if we can adhere to our promises that we did on the first go around, add that extra heat, then we would have a longer conversation about this. But I think from my perspective, it's worth giving a shot. We've spent a lot of time, in terms of little budgetary components, like you said, we don't have forty million. We're incredibly budget conscious. I've looked around the states, I've seen different response, go forward. I've seen different construction sites, millions of dollars over budgets. They always go for, you know, I, I think it was very remarkable that they were able to stay inside of budgets and to meet the constraints that we put forward. So I think as far as our history goes, we've demonstrated we have a good service of money. I have a bit of a reputation on this board for being very tightfisted with the budget dollars and how we spend those. And I think that this could at least reinforce as a necessary component for us to do the work that we promised we would do. A necessary evil? Not evil. A necessary business requirement due to circumstances outside.
You want to.
Yeah, and if, if we could have predicted the last thirty years, I can tell you, I probably wouldn't be here. I'd be somewhere in my place in Tahiti. Because I'd have bought Tesla stock by the pile load and then sold it last year instead of waiting until this year. And, but, you know, we just can't see the future. And, and the fact that everybody's dealing with the same things. But what you have to realize is, is kind of blessing with the curse, that the value of my house has doubled. The value of most of our homes has doubled, very close to that. And rather than complaints, the cost of building this school is also almost doubled. And so the reality is if we're able to come in at less than double, we're doing a really remarkable job. But I, I'm like Mr. Stockwell, I, I said, I will never ask for more money. That's it for me. And so I also said, we're going to provide these things and meet the needs of our students. And I guess meeting the needs of our students supersedes my desire to not ask for more money, especially when we can do it without adding an overarching burden on the, on, on our constituents. If, if we can, we build trust. I, it's interesting to me that all of our teachers have talked about that, or our board members talked about that, that we build trust among the population. And, and I think that we have to just continue to tell them that, hey, this is an opportunity. It's kind of like, like your coupon, folks, you're going to get something. You're not going to get something for nothing, but you're going to get something that might go somewhere else if you don't. But we're going to pay our state taxes. For me, I just assume my state taxes go to St. Helen's as to South Memphis. Nothing against South Memphis, but if I'm paying taxes, I just assume having an effect for our students. So I, I can see that we need to take advantage of that gap. We need to take advantage of the fact that we can do this at a reasonable cost. Not raising the taxes is a, is a big deal, so I'm, I'm for it. I'm, I'm actually for going for, let's go for eighteen million, but the rest of the world is not. So Trinity won't do it, the rest of it, you know, it, it just, I, I think that the responsible thing to do is to come as close as we can. The other thing, the reason that we're building new science rooms, by the way, is the, back in nineteen eighty when we did this, and then we had this horrific interest rates went flying up to eighteen percent and property values dove about forty percent. And the value of your house, it was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, became a hundred and seventy thousand dollar house. I lived through that and I had to wait another ten years just to get my building costs out of my own home. So I, I, I know that those things, the cycle can go both ways. But, so we passed the bond, we build this wonderful high school and you get through building B, well, we don't have enough money for the science department. It'll be the next one. And it's only been forty years, but now the science department is getting there long after me. And, but that's the way that, that the world operates. And, and our timing seems to be impeccable for, for picking these forty year cycles in the, in the world economy, but they're, they're beyond our control. We just have to live with them and evolve with it. It is, it is kind of almost humorous to me that, okay, happens again, you know? It's just, we have to all over again. So that's, that's kind of what it is, but I, I'm, I'm thinking that this is a beyond responsible approach. I, I think it's really a very excellent approach and that we're doing the maximum we can without really asking the public for more, more pain.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if I would be even recommended going out for another bond if we wouldn't have got the Awesome Grant. We doubled our money.
What does that look like when you're asking for five times for a penny?
The total?
If we, instead of just breaking even and actually refinancing, what if we ask for five times? I think we're going to, just wondering, was there an amount that started growing?
Yeah, not quickly. We could have looked at maybe seven million, but that would have added length onto the bond for mature, before it matured, I think, three years. And there are some numbers in there that weren't favorable, very much like, you know, you're going out for a home loan, you look at interest rates, you look at, and that was not very favorable for us. I mean, it looked like we could get some money, but in the long run, we would not have been.
You spent a lot more money on interest than you got in benefit.
So there is, there is that, the other one that we looked at was, I think, fifteen million. And it, it raised things up to over two fifty per thousand when you added it together. That, that's a lot. And that's, I think, and so, so with this, you know, like I said, we squeeze it into the sliver, not really changing what the current rate is, and we doubled our money. So, and then I've spoke with a number of consultants and their feeling is, you know, to be fair to your community, that's the right way to go. And they didn't recommend going for more money. They felt like, you know, frankly, it said, you know, your community can really support and bear and you need to treat them such. So this, this is really kind of, it's kind of painful if they don't bend over and pick up on it. It's, it's just.
Yep. I think everything lives up perfect. I want me to speak to right for you, I don't know. Oh, I wish we should have.
Where's that thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, again, forty years later.
It's a kindergarten range. Well, of course, I want to have impressed with the first time. I know we came to the dream school, but they, they, actually we'd be able to even help a lot. We'll go across four months, five years. Yeah, nothing ever called my life, just randomly, so you gotta take it from another.
Well, and then we end up being drawn out of the hat first. I mean, you know, it's like.
There you go.
I started.
I remember when the middle school was freshly finished. I know we like managed to stand a budget towards an incredible feat. But I remember walking in there and going, what happened? Because apparently, supposedly the cafeteria was supposed to be bigger and the bathroom was supposed to be large when all of that had gotten, cut down in size due to budget constraints. And I don't want anything like that happening to the high school. So I, I feel like this is an excellent opportunity and we should take it.
People, they expect it to maybe some of the industrial investors, but private companies that invest in this high school for flagship building of the county. To that point, the students and the community, remaining able to do what we said we were going to do and, you know, maintaining the tax, what we promised.
We just know that our students are. They're strong, right? I, I'm getting comments from former students, like fifty year ago students, that are saying they're very excited to see our walkthroughs and things that folks have been, and they're, they're really big, you don't remember that.
They've been watching your progress.
Anyway, yeah, it's, it's, they're, they're really our students and from, from the past that think this is pretty amazing stuff that we're doing. And so I, I think as we keep, as, I really like those walkthrough videos and things and keep people, we need to keep people appraised of what we're doing because they, they get pretty excited about it.
Have you guys seen the video? The latest video of the construction and the walkthrough of the building?
Yes, I would have that last one. What do you think? Here's a way to go home, right? I thought I'd be there for it, so it was like, you guys can go home.
Yeah. Yeah. There's a thing, one of the most salient points that was come out tonight, is what she said. And it was, when you go back to those numbers, you look at that parking lot number, down there at the bottom, that nine hundred thousand dollars to do that parking lot, twenty sixteen, six years ago, it was what, three hundred and fifty, you said? I have never seen any type of construction get cheaper over the course of time. Either do it right now and do as much as you can now, or you pick a can down the road and you cannot catch that.
The parking lot. I want to follow up on that.
It's not going to get cheaper for construction.
For me, so it's been my goal through every one of the financials from everything, is to make sure that what I would call the structure is there for every dream part, or it's a wing this way or wing that way. And it's not, even McBride had to be done in the beginning. Is that every electrical wire and every plumbing pipe was even built to the end of the pods for the last two classrooms to get added later so that it was all one click. But for me, from air conditioning to everything else, we can't, and we, to me, on air conditioning, I feel like we can't keep asking people to be in a building and sweating, no different than we wouldn't put them in there without heat. And so to me, that's not even an option anymore. We've, that's having too many hot babes anymore. But as far as the items, as long as we can get it all basically there, then we can figure out later how to add remaining parts that are on the outside. You come back in and put a new beam in and a new electrical wire and new everything else again. But that's, that's, so I want to make sure that we have everything structurally there.
That, that does raise the question, are they doing anything that would allow us to then add those B C classrooms?
Yeah, we've, and Smalley's been an advocate for that from, to get going. So that's something we've asked them.
They may not have the wire, but they can have the conduit.
Yeah, and we're, we're doing that in multiple purposes where we can, even with our fields. We were at our last meeting, we were talking about running conduit out. So in the event where we want to put lights, we've got something that we can pull or, and we're putting it on a concession stand to get, get power.
I, I, I know that there are several things that I've been involved in building prior to I always run. I mean, there's a three inch conduit up where they might put in a sanctuary and there's conduit that happened to go out there, they're shopped now. Those are all there. Those are under the ground, under the thing stuck up a long time ago. Now it's useful.
My, my hope and dream is we won't be, we won't need to tap into the community as much and be able to add even more back to this number. But it's important that we keep that contingent, especially.
That's kind of the last thing, you know, if there, if there's still something there, then you can, you can, you can bring that ready at all for the end of the year.
Yeah.
How are we going to allow them to do that? Are we, are we going to do anything? I'm sorry, isn't it, you've done it or?
Power. Well, you can get power, it's the. Well, when you get power, it's the fire safety, fire safety piece that's issuing that command. Because of the hub and the conduit and the stuff going in there. I'm concerned because today I was told, hey, the contractors want to talk to you about the additional cost to get the gyms open this summer for fall coming up. For me, I don't know what those are, I'll have a conversation and talk about it. The dollars a cents, we're talking three thousand dollars to like get those gyms open and cutting things out. You watch that hundred thousand dollar, then, you know, it stinks, absolutely. But for a hundred thousand dollars, you might have to play basketball, close to volleyball when we're near. And that's not what I want to do. But we also need to be very mindful of near costs. So one answer to, well, yeah, I thought we were gonna be opening, but as things shift and change, today in our meeting, I was told the contractors want to talk about all of it.
Yeah, I'm not spent, interested in spending throwaway money, anything in large amount.
I don't think it'll be thrown away, it's gonna be done eventually.
Yeah, but if you're putting in something, you tear it temporarily, then you can tear it back out and put your other stuff in and that's, so it was, okay, I got, I had the volleyball season in, but gee, if I'd have just waited until spring, I would have spent none of that money and it would still be the way it is. That's, that's.
At the same time, though, what is it crossing that to be on the other end of the wall here? I'm not seeing what that means.
I don't know, but I, I keep imagining it being there. So the cost.
Yeah, I would forecasted, I'm not an exact answer to your question, but I forecasted that's in for the rest of the year because, you know, you didn't have that two months in the contract. Probably not twelve within the allowable budget. But like, look at the daily period of, I would have that part of you, I would have done it in that.
So it would have to be, it would have been money for me to ever think that that was worth it either. But, you know, that's something I would look at, it's, okay, the words is still cutting me. Well, I'm not spending it nowhere here, but that's all.
We're not passing kids for practice alone.
No, I don't think so.
I think they're just getting their practices at my party or something.
Yes, honey.
I want to know that we're not, like, we're lucky when all the rest of our already completed except for one minute, because we're not, or one week, we're not fully complete yet. But it goes in a lot more complex project and, yeah.
A road truck, sure. Where are we at with estimated completion? Because I know that the supply chains are snarled, some of the, you know, here's a thing we need to order, we order it way ahead of time, oh wait, it might not be here. We can't do this thing because we haven't. So are there any constraints going on in that space or?
I try to work all correctly, then move in target, twelve twenty five.
Twelve twenty five. Perkitation of the whole project. Obviously, we're, as things get constructed, I would hope that, so I would cheer that we'll just.
Yeah, and the plan, it's to finish the old building A part, the most, where the most new construction is, and then move on to the building B. I'm not sure if they decided they're gonna do the upper part of B and then the lower part or some type of a base vision of that as well. So we will, we will get some of that prior.
Well, there's a lot of questioning, there are a lot of folks are truly different questioning, so who?
I mean, there are people asking.
Mine was a chair.
How long are we in that? So we won't be able to utilize massive portfolios in the building. Between there or when, I would assume some of those classrooms would be accessible, correct?
Some, yeah.
I think you'll probably see a staged reduction of portfolios as lots of things. Okay, for sure.
And for that question, we're in the role of the lender, we already added that off, right?
Correct. Yeah. But hoping to recruit, it's not going to be doing, hoping to recruit, it's not going to. I'm packing the ones for the next one. We should start counting the options a little.
Boy, if we get a deal, we're gonna be.
And we know if we work.
Deal for you. As long as you can get it past staff who's running your hiring.
Okay, any other, any other thoughts? So the timeline that you put forward is, it's the eleventh. And there was a meeting, the twenty fifth, I believe, and then the twenty sixth was a file date. And then there's the last day of the file. So am I correct in understanding that we will vote on this on the twenty fifth?
That is correct.
Okay, is there anything in between now and the twenty fifth that we need to be considering prior to making that?
Not that I can think of, just, we'll have, we're working on the language, but that wouldn't necessarily cause us to be warned that, that, um, this is.
Yeah, the short form, I remember, a longer extended statement in March. And because of the continuation of the prior project, it means it's going to be very similar. And that would be part of your resolution package, and you should get the Friday report for that.
All right, you're all good, right? Five point three point three, your district.
Yeah, so cool. Last thing, I want to go over a district business wise, has to do with our elementary schools. And we talked about this, that not only in St. Helens, but across the state and the country, we're seeing an uptick in this regulated or unregulated behavior of students in your outbursts, really discussion about, right, students not being school ready. And add the two year COVID break, we've got kinders who, you know, this first year of any real experience of school, first graders who have had very little. So it's been a challenge and as we know, the world's changed. And so we need to be, rather than expecting our students to be school ready, we need to get our schools student ready, right? We need to flip that because we don't have to go over the kiddos coming in, the way we have to go over our action. So our teachers are worn out because we have a lack of staff, just like every other organization. They're covering classes and studying and, you know, they're not taking care of themselves like we need them to. They're skipping doctor's appointments because they're afraid that if they're absent, then they will have coverage and their colleagues will have to cover for them. So, you know, I'm, I'm sharing what's going on in the schools. And I, I know it's also going on in most other schools. But the difference is we've got a class full of young people who are struggling with the impact of COVID, the gap that we've had, they're, they're struggling with a lot of different things. So I've met now two times, they actually just mentioned this being, a few of elementary teachers, and they brought three big concerns, safety for students and staff, lack of flipped curriculum resources and inequities across the district. A lot of the inequities is wrapped around planning time, where they have more time to prepare, more time to plan for those students and plan for our schools being ready for students rather than expecting students to be ready for students. So the first thing, they had some, they gave you a big list of ideas. I've gone through and vetted that, I've worked with principals, other teachers, other administrators. I've consulted with colleagues outside the district. This is a start of the list, but I think it's a goodness, they were pleased from all accounts with the direction that we're going here. And so I wanted to kind of go through these. The first three items on there are really staffing. So we're, we posted a behavior specialist, we're looking to hire some additional instructional assistants. And we've also surveyed our current half time instructional assistants, see if they're interested in going full time. And what we would like to do is develop teams. First of all, have these folks supporting students and teachers. And an example of how we might utilize it, each school has a team. And if we have a student that's struggling in a classroom, then we have a couple of folks go in and that are trained in social emotional learning, some calming strategies to work with students. And somebody else then go in and work with a teacher, provide them with a strategy on support. That's kind of the reactionary piece, but we want to work on that reactionary piece to push us back to where we were pre-COVID. Remember, we, we had those calming rooms and calming corners. We were really beginning to get some momentum on supporting students with Aces and, you know, common form work and then, you know, the rug, the world pulled the rug out from underneath us. We're trying to get back there, we feel we need to have additional support to do that. We've got some social emotional training or unconscious discipline. Teachers are really excited about it, but it's a matter of finding the time. We've got a couple of trainings set up at the end of this month, a Saturday and the next Saturday following in February, where they're gonna do a deep dive into conscious discipline. We'll spread that out to schools on Wednesday training, do some after school training as well. And it's not, here's how you do it, it's more of a framework of philosophy on how to approach students and help them feel safe. And again, it's back to, we'll try to make our schools student ready. There was concern about lack of curriculum resources. We're in the process of, we purchased social studies, we've got new English language arts. And we're in the process of having schools review and use some of the new math curriculum. So by the end of the year, we'll have those three new adoption. We need some time to get the training in. And so at the secondary level, it's different. As a math teacher, I got new math books every seven years. But as an elementary teacher, I get a new curriculum, new books, new resources every year. So I get the math one and I gotta get social studies one and I do the language arts one. Because we haven't had adoptions for a while and in my conversations with them, actually the last English language arts adoption at the elementary level, I did as an elementary principal in this district, and that was twenty years ago. And they're still using those same books. So we're purchasing those finally, getting some new stuff for them. They need time to impact them, they need time to be trained in the most updated practices. And we've got phenomenal teachers, that's not what I'm suggesting, but if you're given a new tool, getting some training on how to use it. And the difference is, all the resources, curriculum resources that we're purchasing now have online programs as well, they're also online. So our teachers need to learn how to access all the online resources, how to help students access the online textbooks because we've been sent home the Chrome book and they can go through that and have the paper book at home or at home and at school. So we need that time. So that kind of drops down to really the big piece. And what I'd like to suggest is looking at our early release Wednesdays and giving four days to our elementary team. So hopefully beginning in February, so maybe the last part of February, February, March, April, May. Instead of just having half a day, I'd like to suggest, let's give them the full day. So in the morning, maybe the first two hours, we would train them on the new curriculum resources. And the rest of the day, they'd have to wrap their heads around the material and how to plan. And again, I keep going back to the, get the schools ready for the kids rather than expecting the kids to be near their school. It's, it's an imposition, I know, on our community, but I think the benefits of this outweigh the challenges. So that's something that we need to talk about. The next piece is, we're gonna do some adjustments in the bell schedule to provide more time for our elementary teams. We'll be scheduling some planning meetings here late January, early February. I've already talked about rebooting the social emotional piece. And then the other piece, it's really big, it's at the bottom. We're gonna begin moving to a push-in model for special education services. And actually, all of our services, T I L E L. Right now, most of our services are pullout, which once upon a time was of a pretty good practice. Now with the different services, we have kids that are coming out of class not a lot. And the other piece that we have a challenge because of staff shortages, it's, it's tough for us to hire high caliber special education teachers. They're a hot commodity. Matter of fact, I think we've had two positions posted most of the year and we're running without those folks. But what we can do, by moving to a push-in model, we can hire additional IAs, train them, and they go into the classroom to support students and deliver instruction for, for the eighty percent of the kids in special ed that they would need support. Then kind of, you know, there's an education goes up out of prime, but we've got five percent, fifteen percent, and eighty percent. Then the fifteen percent and the five percent of the students left over that need some additional, maybe more intensive intervention, whether it be for behavior or academics, are highly trained teachers who's freed up to work with rather than larger numbers. So this is a strategy, kind of, look what we've got and leverage the resources that we have. It's easier for us to find somebody within our community, higher than full time as an IA, train them up and do great work with our kids than it is to find somebody that's highly qualified and licensed special education teacher. So.
Very well, wait a second.
Yeah, yeah. So this is kind of the beginning of a package to try to get our schools better prepared for what we're experiencing with our students. We've got phenomenal teachers and they're always asking, hey, I could use some help. And I think this is a good start, this is gonna cost some money. I wouldn't suggest anything that we can't afford, but we need to add this in the supplementary budget to pull off some of the more expensive pieces. But I think that's it, I'm really most curious about your thoughts on the four days. I'd like to have a conversation about that because then I'd like to, maybe as soon as we could, start talking about making that happen.
Something I did think about when you talked earlier about that end of each month, in the, in March, I don't know where spring break is this year, but that.
Very end of month.
Yeah, right? That would work on that month. At the same time, then I think it would be better to have it be consistent. So if that means that month's not gonna work, then maybe it'll be the third week of the month, something else. But looking at what's fallen in the last week of either month or that week, when I just happen to switch around there, maybe it's a lot more stuff about what maybe.
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely something.
So instead of thinking that it's four days, think of it as twenty hours.
Yes.
So what we're trying to use twenty hours to be effective and plan online for jump starts.
Yeah, but that's, that's what I'm quite looking at. And we're not the only district that has done this. Got examples of other districts that have taken this time to get ready. Beaver, can I know, doesn't turn that this year, doesn't.
For some of the curriculum adoption, is there any way, if you look at that, if we look at what we can utilize, that we can either build or support a parental side by side? So one of the struggles that I had, as I was raising my children, was I would get something from the school and look at it. It doesn't look like what I did when I was a kid. Think I can help? Oh, here's some frustration. Frankly, that is kind of carried through to the day now when I sit down and I say, hey, kid, can I help you? No, I don't like how you help me. And a lot of them is just built on, I'm either doing it differently, I don't know necessarily how the material's being presented or how to mobilize or speak shared language. We have a family resource center. So part of this I'd like to consider as we look at it, how do we support our parents?
How do we support our parents so that they understand and can speak the same language? So that some of those behavior and frustrations helps to mitigate that. You know, I love that. And so Michelle Pollak has really done some, a deep dive into social emotional learning. I think she would be a great one to have. Michelle came up with Rosa, who's done some really good work with our Latinx community. She's done some work with, oh, parent cafes. So yeah, we can absolutely do that. You're right, having a common language, especially on the. Right.
Well, and even from quick from the beginning of COVID, when we had the stand-up Chromebooks right off the bat, we were flattered really bad. I still believe, and just even from the ones that are just at my home quite frequently, that we self-parents it and all, and it will even understand how to be quite. They haven't had time to right now. And so they feel like they can't even help their kids even get on the Chromebook in the first place, let alone to see what they're trying to do to help them. So they're not even getting to that point. That's why I kept thinking that it would be great to have Ed to have frequent Peter classes for a while.
Well, yeah, maybe we could tap into students too and have a couple of Chromebook one-on-ones. But also, I kind of envision an online resource. Having maybe a teacher and advertise out, if you want to learn how to access the math online resources, there's a, you know, a workshop going on at the resource center. We need to do that at schools. Is this also a space that we can leverage our partnership with the town hall recreation industry? I don't have a lot of that.
For those people.
I'd like to see both of them.
I think that's the issue is we are, and that's what happens very frequently.
Well, we can leverage our resources in a way to supplement that.
There's using space, basically.
Right, I think so. Rather go where people are as much as possible than trying to force them to us. And the other thing, as our department complex is built out, we need to push into those RECC areas and be training there too. While the RECC center does their things, I see a bunch of cars over there. Parents are obviously there. So maybe while they're doing interactive items with the kids, we can have a parental lab and some people over and assist with learning or growing or something. Not when their time's not just sitting there staring at the wall or on their phone or. At least offer them an opportunity to use their time in a structured way.
And like. That would be her better name, is what would be good time. I think it's also important to offer both the day and the night time.
Yeah.
Because you know, night work is something that you learn.
And I don't want to overencumber the RECC area, but I think that it is a space. Yeah, I would like to, you encourage our teachers to help support as far as offering classes through the RECC program. And I, I think it would be in our interest to even provide them most of the site. If we do that, if they can engage our students. So recommend, is there a way that we can create some sort of optional component? I don't know what the requirements for that would be, the timelines or anything. I would like to see an opportunity for all preschools providing for that. Like after-school type programs? Yes, by teachers. Or a second, whatever that.
We have to make the LA curriculum, we don't have a identity there, you know, for here.
Um, the ELL, I'm sorry, I meant this book. We're hoping to have it within a month, but we're in the middle of like negotiating prices. The book, how many, the training convenience, what I was referring to by that.
And I never before, per day, I'll start training even. Being really, really hard on parents, but I'm just like, I don't know, I support. If we were to do it, I would think it'd be a great way to run my way. Maybe for parents that come in and have an actual, maybe a weekend or be something that's beneficial for the family and to do a little, to work on writing, be able to do something. I guess, I'm kind of not for it. But I understand needing to use the resource. But if we are adjusting our behavior, I still feel like we're really talking about electronics and demo. And then those revolvers are just kids that aren't so prone to electronics more often. And it reacts like a drug in our system. So when they're coming into our school, they're going crazy and they're not able to concentrate. Like we're talking about a whole other subject. A lot of times, we pass the time that isn't needed. And needing that information or education shows up to our students or our parents as well.
So part of that, training.
If we're just giving a Chromebook or an electronic, I know that's the new thing and we're all supposed to be learning this, but we're all extremely busy. And if our kids are just stuck on electronics, they're not gonna be able to do it. So if we are throwing to our students, we need to do more physical activities and medians and laying them around a mosque and teaching them in an atmosphere that is not sitting out of there. And we had COVID, which was such a blood stain in so many ways. Where we could have adapted and changed and done college schedules with the high school and different things. And we're kind of trying to go back to old days. And we need to be flexible and keep moving forward in a different way.
For sure. I would say, I, in any space that I currently occupy, personal or professional, socialization skills across the board for humans is reduced. I don't care if we're talking about infants, we're talking about toddlers, we're talking about entry students, middle schoolers, high schoolers, college students, professionals, or anybody else, socialized skills have been completely eliminated. People don't know how to communicate, they don't know how to teamwork, they don't know how to resolve conflict. It is, it is a struggle in every space that I have. So yes, we do need to look at it moving forward and thinking about how we do things. But to a certain extent, we've got to get back to some of the basics of retraining ourselves to resolve and getting close to each other again as opposed to all hiding behind those. I think it's also important to note that children's attention, attention lengths have shortened in recent years. By a great amount, and this is due in great, in great part to the fact that they go home and they play a 10-minute round of Fortnite or they scroll through TikTok or Instagram, where they are constantly being fed content that is meant to be short, short and quick, and then move on to the next. And I feel that's carrying over to the classroom. And so they're not able to sit down and read two, three chapters of a book because it's not as quick. It's not deliver the content fast, move on to the next thing. And I think that is going to be a trouble for the next few years because that was everyone black during COVID. Especially for these elementary schoolers, these kindergarten, first grader, second graders, who really haven't known anything but that. Oh, you are wise beyond your years. Because now, take that thought, go into a first grade classroom or a third grade or a fifth grade classroom and have a teacher stand up in front of the class and provide information for five minutes when they have their kids' attention, but they go much beyond five minutes, even in high school. Swipe, swipe, swipe. Definitely. They're not. Next, next. So we, in some of the training, we have to shift from the, kind of that experts. We're gonna be the sage on the stage, right? We can't stand and deliver. We've got to be moving and facilitating the learning. Otherwise, it's not, have that attention span. And they can Google it faster than I can tell you. So if I'm thinking I'm the expert, kids are fact-checking me. This doesn't work.
We're not arguing.
Yeah. I know there's some weird sites about fact-checks.
Actually, crazy weird deviation, but my grandmother, I found this report, it's a beautiful cursive and it's a college classic in history and it's about the trails, the word and stuff. And then with my mom's handwriting, it's really good. And it looks a little bit like it. And then mine's like, you know, goes down the hill. And then you see my daughters, and I'm like, what's happened here? You can see the fallacy humanity that adjusts in this, there is a more generated.
Well, I can tell you, though, when I was in elementary school, we did have a bottle of ink in the well. We had to use fountain pens. We did have to work on our handwriting, and that was a large portion of our instruction. I'm not sure that it may be any more intellectually capable. When ballpoint pens came out, they were banned from the school. We couldn't even bring them in. We could have a pencil and a fountain pen, that's it. So you have to understand that, yes, penmanship may have degraded, but my typing skills have improved.
Yes.
And mechanical drawing or engineering, I did learn to letter quite well. So if I really want to be careful, I can print very nicely. And if you want to see my cursive, well, they named it appropriately.
I will say, I think we've gotten away from some of the components of the cursive writing. And to a certain extent, we, one of the reasons that I'm so adamantly continuing to think about the arts and I think about some of the creative concepts versus just art and facts to facts. Creativity requires the brain to operate at a different level. It slows it down. It requires to think about different outcomes, different variations, things that are not just movable. And we've gotten away from a lot of that component. We gotta, we gotta train them to learn, we gotta train them to always think. The cursive requires you to think. It requires you to slowly, methodically go about doing something. And we don't have that anymore. So if we want to start slowing things down, that might be a place to start.
Ron, I can also add then, just as an advocate for the other side, that all of my children, and now I'm seeing most of my grandchildren, they were, one in particular, gorgeous printers. As soon as they learned cursive, because it's faster, they had to take notes. And their writing has gone to heck in a handbasket because they're scribbling, trying to keep up with the teacher in cursive. And then it's kind of a mixture of cursive and printing. And even printing, I said, slow down, just, just print, will you? Because the cursive was done first.
I can type faster.
Now, you know.
I cannot, of course, I can always type faster.
I think we actually degraded when I went to cursive.
I realized in my stamp, I was writing some invites. And I come into invite card.
Get three of them out.
Get the family back to the hands.
Something cramp going on.
This, this was. Yeah, both, I can type faster than I can.
What's ironic about the typing now for me is that I remember taking typing class and also piano. And I could, how do people do both hands at the same time? Just, just made no sense to me. And I could do anything with the right hand, but this left hand was like, just not doing it part, right? Yeah, I could whip a craps out, I think, well, it only took me 40 years. I think I got to handle that.
I, that's, that's it for my report, but I do have to say, besides my chemistry and physics class, typing is the class that I use the most, I think that I.
I actually have a shout-out for Mr. Raj. My middle schooler came home and said, "I'm the coolest class ever," ironically. So excited. And it was nitrogen and frozen marshmallows and.
Frozen.
Yes.
I remember that.
She just did it yesterday. Did you like it too?
It went on the floor and they were like feet up and.
I remember, I remember, I remember. Yeah, who I did it against today. And he was like, put up, like put like a bunch of marshmallows in it and like passed it around. And they like felt like a freeze straight or whatever. So they like crunch in your mouth or something. And then he'd like put like a banana in it and like it was like break, like shattered.
What about the dragons? Was there anybody that ate a cracker and the dragon?
He did that. I don't think it's him, he was walking around like, it was, it was.
See, interactive, crazy fun, and it had children's attention.
I had the attendance girl come in and I had a balloon that I put in, that put nitrogen in the water. So it all showed up. I said, you know, I said, you're not really a science person, but I gotta show you something. Science is different than regular things as you're used to. I said, you're used to blow up a balloon and tie a knot in it. But today, we tied the knot in it, now I got a balloon and the balloon blew up. And she just walked out of it like, weird.
Wizardry, people do it.
I will tell you, don't tell your teacher to distill the oxygen and, and make too high concentration of that. It's pretty blue. It really is, liquid oxygen is pretty blue and you can get it with your liquid nitrogen. But as it said, hazardous, it is not, turned out to be not as good as it could have been.
If you can't tell by now, who was the second teacher at the high school? Ford and Ron.
Oh, Mr. Ford is one of my theorists. Yes, let's move back. So there was visualization here, yes.
So, so the next part is visitors to address the board on agenda items. Is there anything that you two would like to talk about?
Anything that we have said tonight?
I do think that we should bring the purpose back. I taught in a similar type of purpose. And it's a very important, my tech, and one of the very important ones, start signing documents and whatnot. And then engaging teaching. That, I, most students, when they get to the third hand, it's like being hand-bond actively, practicing my methods. And the new system is really very good job with doing hand-bond activities or having a part in a parent class and engage all the science teachers and whatnot. The classes that you just get lectures for in a parent class, it goes nowhere. I had my new all my sophomore year, and I learned more math in that year. And I have learned in all the twelve years of school now because we did a lot of project and made Q and fill the Q will be written. We're constantly having them move around in the class and not just sitting there getting lectures and things like that.
She would love to argue math curriculum in the.
Basically applying and using another way.
Go visit Columbia City, you'll see.
I'm saying, I just do so good last year in my math class, so I'm taking math on senior. And I'm saying, there's, you know, my time, I'm wanting to really do that. I go home and I defend my math homework for extra two hours. The time that I have.
And we should give her the Jessica. Jessica's got the number two.
That's two, I guess.
All right, well, if nobody has anything else, upcoming meeting is January 18th at 6:00. And that is work session. I mean, still doing.
I don't believe we need that at this point. I think we're in good shape. So we won't need that for anything on related preparation or anything else? No, I think we're, I think we're good because we have, we have some labor we have to do right through 27th. Now the March 8th, we'll be able to bring animal, we're looking at the election being made right there, so.
Do you need decisions before that though? Before, to get approved by the 25th in February? So can we wait that long for that stuff?
January 25th.
Well, yeah. But I mean, so can we wait until March to do what you're talking about?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm talking about.
Oh, okay, just that, not just what it all includes and.
Yeah, we'll get that in the regular meeting on the 25th. And then we'll have more conversation on the 8th and then February 22nd. So yeah, I think we've got, we're good.
I won't be here by the 16th. I'd like to have our meeting on the 8th or put it all in my schedule next, you think, probably?
Um, because we only have, we do only have one meeting in March. That might be a, that might be an idea, and that's a little bit earlier than what it's due.
To have a mind call planning, that's why I call it the work session on that thing.
Regular.
And I did the regular.
We put in working tickets for a travel trip on how to follow success in the reservation in Arizona. And we got them in 2020. And so now, they told us like three weeks ago that we have to go. So I have to go try and get some airline tickets and pack bags from there.
March in Arizona is not terrible.
No, it's a good time.
27th and 28th.
You want to make the eighth the regular, or the work session?
I think, well, I guess up to this group. Do we want to switch it and make March 8th the regular session? March 15th the planning session? And if we need the planning session, we'll know on the 8th, whether we have that time.
You want to make some more?
That work for you guys?
Just make sure you change it to 6:30, not 6:00.
I'll show up when you come.
Well, we'll be a half hour late.
That's all right.
Are you good for that? Okay, check in. Ryan, Bill, you just put your name like that? Okay, and then line is set for the next one. Okay, what's left? Anything else, anybody?
Move to the room.
It's been moved and moved. Do a drum. Okay, and this meeting is a drum, and you've been able to leave.